Yeah, I would like to call the organizational school board meeting of Independent School District 659 to order. It is 7 o'clock PM. And we will begin the organization of the board with items for individual action. And the first item will be the election of officers. And so the first officer that we're looking to elect will be a chairperson for the 2014 year. Are there nominations for the office of board chair? Yes, Carrie?
I nominate Ellen Iverson. I think she's provided excellent leadership for the board and I hope that she'll continue serving in that capacity as chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Three times. Are there other nominations? Okay. Hearing no other nominations, we will proceed to vote on the position of board chair for 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Madam Chair. And I will pass the gavel to you.
Right.
And you can go ahead and proceed with the other officer.
The next election officer is, we are looking at vice chair. So nominations are now in order for vice chair. Anne?
I would like to nominate Julie Pritchard. Second name?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Julie Pritchard. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? All right, hearing no other nominations. All those in favor of having Julie as vice chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are now moving on to the election of clerk. I'm looking for nominations for the election of clerk. Julie?
I would like to nominate Noel Strattmo for the position of clerk.
You have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table for Noel Strattmo as clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now ready to move on to the election of treasurer.
I nominate Anne Maples.
Okay.
Great job, Bruce. Fast here and lightning heavy. Accept that and continue.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. We have a motion on the table for Anne Maple as treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of approving Anne Maple as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, officers. The next item for individual action is to set our stipends for our board members. We've had the same stipends for quite a long time. In your packet you'll notice that we have a salary comparison with neighboring school districts. The thought process has been in the past that if a board member were to seek office and need to arrange childcare in order to perform the office, that we wanted the stipend to be sufficient for that sort of need. So that's kind of where the amount had come up with and has kind of stayed the same. So is there a motion to approve the stipend as set?
So moved.
Moved by Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Anne. Any discussion? No. All those in favor of approving the stipends, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee appointments. What we have typically done in the past is had board members consider the committee appointments that you've had this past year, think about if there's new opportunities that you're interested in, and let myself, this board chair, know in the next week or so your interest, and then I'll be making those appointments and bringing them back to the next board meeting. So if that is, that's what we have been doing, so I would, I guess, say that we will move forward with that. All right. Items in consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? Okay. So would I have a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by Anne.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment of our organizational meetings. Moved by Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of adjourning our organizational meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same as adjourned. With that, I'm called to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, January 13th, and it is 7:06 PM. So Dr. Richardson, there were a number of items in our table file.
Yes, in terms of items in table file, you're going to find some personnel items for appointments, increases, decreases, change in assignments, retirements, resignations. You also will have the copies of the three facility study proposals that we've received for your review, and also a copy of the January 2014 enrollment report for your review.
All right, very good. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. All right. Public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the Northfield School District to address the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? All right. I'd like to remind the public, this is a listening opportunity and not the time to debate an issue. I'd ask you to identify yourself, your home address, and if you represent a group, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Angel Deckendorf. My home address is 1207 Sunset Court in Northfield, Ann Cooper's mom. I'm not sure what I can say that hasn't already been said. I know you all know that we oppose you moving our child from Sibley. I'm hoping before you vote, you'll all consider what a move like this would mean for our son Cooper and our family, and that this decision should be based on more than numbers and money. We're asking you to consider our wishes as parents and what we know to be best for our son. To realize how few options we're left with if you vote this through and it doesn't go well, if he's moved and has less success, if he has less friends, if he becomes stressed, sick, or hospitalized, what do we do then? Our family will be left to pick up the pieces. Our child's not just a number or somebody taking up space that you can move without repercussions, no matter how carefully you do it. He has special needs, but he also has feelings and friends. And just because he can't vocalize them, as well as a typical first grader, doesn't make them any less real or important. We're asking you to rethink this proposal, go back and find a solution that's not potentially damaging to not only my child's educational future, but to his health as well. We're asking the administration in the future to work with us on a solution, to ask the Special Education Advisory Committee, teachers, and therapists their input when issues arise like this that directly impact their programs and their students, to give parents more than one day notice before an important meeting, to not schedule sensitive issues during the holidays, and to not hand down one option that is more of a decision than a discussion. Bottom line is, we realize it's within a school district's authority to make a decision like this, but does that make it right? I honestly am still blown away that it's even legal to force four children's special needs out of their own school because the administration has decided there isn't space for them there anymore. And I hope the school board agrees with me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, we are ready to move on to announcements and recognition. I understand we have a list.
We have a considerable list of announcements. Chair, first of all, we'd like to recognize the Prime Town Collaborative. They have learned that they've received a $10,000 grant from the Southeastern Minnesota Arts Council, CMAC. The grant will support bringing artists into the plus, summer plus, and middle school youth center sites to lead art workshops with students between now and September 2014. The grant will support over 90 such visits. The Northfield Middle School Student Council is to be commended. They used their school dance proceeds to make a donation of $2,901.50 to the Northfield Community Action Center. Again, much appreciated. Minnesota Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association has named Tom Groutmann, our Director of Activities, as the state Activities Administrator of the Year. So congratulations to Tom. Also, our first semester service learning students will be sharing their projects as they've done in previous years. That'll be this Wednesday from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM in the lower cafeteria of the high school. Would also like to recognize Becky Har. Becky has been selected as the VFW Post 4393 Teacher of the Year. She was nominated by Jane Gambucci. Becky qualified for the District One Teacher of the Year honors, and she won that too. Becky will be honored as the District One VFW Teacher of the Year, the district meeting in Austin on February 1st. After that, she will be entered into the state contest. So again, congratulations to Becky. We also would like to recognize four students from Northfield High School and two students from Northfield Middle School who were selected for the 2014 Minnesota Strings and Orchestra Teachers Association's Honor Orchestra. The students chosen were Hannah Breeland, cello alternate, Nick Dempsey, viola, Bryn Gray, violin, Maggie Savanich, cello, Marie Smith, violin, Irene Stoudland, violin alternate.
Savan, or Stoudland?
Stoudland.
Stoudland.
The select group of string players from across the state earned an invitation to plan the honors orchestra, which is for grades seven through nine, based on addition recording of their plannings. Minnesota middle level honors orchestra will be performing on February 15th at 11:15 AM in the Minneapolis Convention Center in conjunction with the annual Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Plinics. So again, congratulations to them. We'd also like to alert board members and also announce that the Senate will be, Finance Committee will be education, the Senate Education Finance Committee will be touring Northfield High School as part of a tour of several districts across the state. That tour will be occurring on this Friday morning, the 17th of January, from 7:30 to 9:30. And I think board members received a direct email invitation from Kevin. Again, it will be an opportunity for Northfield High School to share some of the quality programs that they're working with, especially looking at programs like Torch and the One-to-One Initiative and the Academy Program, which I think the senators are really interested in taking a look at. So that's coming up this Friday, the 17th of January, from 7:30 to 9:30. I believe they will be meeting probably in the high school conference room, right inside the high school office will be where they'll start out at 7:30. The other thing I want to announce to you is that, again, the high school and the district have been working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and EDA to put together a summit that is scheduled for January the 27th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM at College City Beverage, where we're really looking for an opportunity to learn about what businesses and industry in our community are really looking for in terms of opportunities for students and thinking about the kinds of skills that they really will need to be successful. And we hope it's an opportunity for us to learn from our business community about the things they need, and also an opportunity for us to share information about the kinds of programs that we're currently running, and some of the programs that we would like to initiate as we move forward, especially in the areas of looking at a more articulated program that would allow us to have course offerings that might not only provide us, provide a student high school level credit, but also, I mean, a college level or certification credit toward an associate degree, and also hopefully move them toward the ability to be successful in an apprenticeship program or an internship program. We're very pleased with the initial response we've had from the Chamber and EDA. They are very willing to work with us and actually jointly signed on through the Chamber for that event. And again, we would encourage board members, if you're available on that Friday from, excuse me, Monday, from 7 to 9 o'clock AM on the 27th, to attend that activity. We'd be very pleased to have you be there. All right, let me double check. And then the last thing we have would just be to share with board members the fact that we are beginning to look at getting feedback from our community in terms of our technology initiative and transformational technology. And there will be two public meetings that will be held, one on Thursday, the 16th, from 7 to 8:30 PM at the middle school, a second one on Tuesday, the 21st of January, from 7 to 8:30 PM, also at the middle school. And the format for these will be similar to what we did last year in terms of an opportunity for them to learn about the kinds of things that we've been doing, and to kind of share warts and all the good things and the things that have been channeled, and then also for them to have an opportunity to give us feedback about how this is working for their kids on a daily basis. So again, lots of announcements, but some very, very positive honors for lots of folks in our school system.
Very good. Are there other announcements, recognition? Julie?
Yes, I wanted to talk a little bit about a pretty amazing fundraiser that our district benefited from, and to thank Allison and Matt Bernstorff for their hosting of what was called the Sweet Charity Holiday Benefit. Giving never tasted so good. And this is the second year of hosting this successful and very unique fundraiser. What it entails is guests bidding on an assortment of absolutely amazing desserts that are unbelievably displayed. Ellen and I were there. And these desserts are prepared by dessert chefs from the area, as well as very talented community members. Not her, Ellen, or I prepared anything. And what Matt and Allison do is pick out three recipients for the funds that are raised. This year it was Ruth's House, the Community Action Food Shelf, and our district's ALC Backpack Program. So Cheryl Matheson from the ALC and Jamie Weeby, a social worker from Bridgewater, did a very nice job doing a presentation to the packed crowd at the Northfield Golf Club. And they did a really good job highlighting the significance of the program, which provides food for the weekend for not only our ALC students, but has also been extended to elementary students and even some of the elderly at Three Lakes Apartments. So the event raised a total of $13,000, and ALC Backpack Program directly received a little over $4,000. So again, our thanks to them for choosing our backpack program as one of their charities to support this year.
Very good. Any other announcements or recognition? All right. With that, we will move on to approve of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes from the last regular school board meeting, which was held on December 9th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie, seconded by Julie. All right?
Yep.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. First item for discussion or report. We have a dynamic duo. So Ryan Kerminger and Simon Tyler are here to present to us Arcadia and Prairie Creek Community School. And you have quite a few members of your community. Do you want to introduce them as well?
Yes, yes, that'd be wonderful. We have, from Prairie Creek, Dan Kelly is a parent and our board chairperson, and Colleen Brooker, who's office manager. Sean Fox, who is here as a parent of a child at Prairie Creek, but also an Arcadia board member. And I think I saw Julie Coors, who are a parent and board member as well. And I have Lindsay Johnson here is one of my teachers and also a school worker. Well, good evening. Thank you for giving us time to report to you this evening and an opportunity to present together. We'd like to start out with just a bit of a background as to why it makes sense for us to report to you the two schools together. It's quite a unique situation, I think nowadays, to have two charter schools in one town authorized by the traditional school district. And we want to give you an insight into how that looks and how we're doing in the K-12 continuum that we represent. Prairie Creek's been a public charter school since 2002. Arcadia, formerly known as Art Tech, of course, has been a public charter school since 2003. Ryan and I have known each other in various capacities over the year. We've both actually taught in our two schools. I was a fourth and fifth grade teacher at Prairie Creek for six years. Ryan was a math teacher and high school advisor at Art Tech for a number of years. I was a director at Art Tech while Ryan was a teacher there. And when I left to become director at Prairie Creek, Ryan became director at Arcadia. So our paths have been very intertwined, and we collaborate and work together as an administrative team and support for each other.
I'm going to give a little bit of an overview. It's different for us to do it in this fashion. So we're going to do the K-12 span. So Simon is going to start off and do K-25, and then I'm going to do 6 through 12. And then we'll come back together at the end for question and answer. Hopefully, if you like this presentation, this style, this presentation tonight will be very much an overview of our two programs. But maybe moving forward, we can spotlight specific pieces together as charter schools within Northfield. There's also a data sheet that everybody got. One side is Arcadia and the other side is Prairie Creek. We wanted to give additional data. We also know that, I believe in your board packets, you have both of our annual reports as well. The presentation is very much going to be more about our program, but we wanted you to have this data as well for this evening.
All right. Yes, as Ryan said, we very much this evening wanted to give you an insight into the mission and purpose of our schools and how we're doing. And we've hopefully enlivened our PowerPoint a little bit for you with some photographs to help you along the way, as well as lots of good information too. So we'll start with the missions of our programs. And the Prairie Creek mission has been the same essentially since the school started over 30 years ago now. Firstly, it's a private school. It's four-fold, that we're a community school, a child-centered school, a progressive school, and we aim to make the world a better place. And as I go through the report, I'll touch on each area, how we're doing in current initiatives. Brief overview of the academic program. There's a picture there of the school in the background. Looks like the children preparing for the May Day celebration, which is one of our traditions. Since the school expanded four years ago, we've been organized into three teams. There's three classrooms of K-1, three of 2, 3, three of 4, 5, 20 students in each class. And we have specialist teachers in the areas of music, art, and Spanish, and three special education teachers, one of whom functions as a coordinator for the special education team. And also, in the last couple of years, we've received funding to add a Title I teacher since our reduced counters increased to the final, we've got some additional funding for that. So the Title I teacher supports targeted, a targeted program for children in the area of literacy and numeracy. Typical day at Prairie Creek. Well, I guess I should start off by saying that there isn't too often a typical day. There's an emergent component to what we do, which means there's an ebb and flow throughout the year of different things going on. But there's certain standards that happen throughout our day, I think. If you were to come into one of our classrooms, Dr. Richardson's had the opportunity in the last couple of years to come and spend a day out at a school and see how this works. But for those of you who haven't, you would technically see a class meeting happening. The teachers are trained in responsive classroom techniques, so it's an opportunity for the children to circle up, work on social curriculum skills, and have time together to form community within the classroom. There will be readers and writers workshops, supporting our literacy program, math workshops, those are the two more discrete subjects. Most of the other subjects are hit through interdisciplinary thematic studies and personal projects. So as we go through our two presentations, you'll perhaps see how in the K-5 world that we have at Prairie Creek, there's a sort of precursor to what happens in the Arcadia program. The children through the week have specials in art, music, and Spanish an hour of each. There's physical education daily, and play is put on there too, because part of our mission is to be very intentional about the non-academic skills that are fostered through play. All the children have recess together for 30 minutes every day, and the teachers actually supervise that recess time, so it's a very intentional part of our program each day. You have a lot of data in your packet about how we're doing in terms of the accountability assessments as a public school, we undertake, just like the traditional schools in this district. Here's a slide just giving you perhaps the briefest of summaries. You can sort of find more depth in the report in your packet. But the top graph just gives you an overview of proficiency measures for the past year. And as you can see, Prairie Creek exceeded the state average in reading, math, and science proficiency, those are the Minnesota comprehensive assessments that students take every spring. We've been working also to develop a model to look at growth. Mr. Jenny has been actually very helpful with us setting targets for this. It's very small cell size, I should explain to you as you look at this. We have to be a little cautious with trend data for the standardized assessments in our small school. The growth that you see there is just representing the children who are taking the assessments in fourth and fifth grade, because every once we have growth data from year to year. As you can see, in reading, we had 83% of our students making medium or high growth, and 71.7% in math. The math's slightly lower than state, but our proficiency data also went up considerably in math as well. And sometimes there's an inverse correlation there between increase in proficiency and decrease in growth. So we'll have to monitor that as we go forward. Evaluation of Prairie Creek goes much beyond the standardized assessments. And just to give you the briefest of insights of some of the other things we do, we have three child-centered conferences a year, which all parents and families and children are expected to attend. The children share a portfolio of their work, set goals in the fall, given a progress report to families in the winter conferences, which are happening this month, and then there's a Sunday conference in the spring. A little further down at the bottom of the PowerPoint there, the narrative reports. This has been a Prairie Creek tradition as long as the school's been in existence. Personally, as a teacher and director, I think it's one of the most profound things we do. The teachers write a two-page narrative about each of the children, which is shared in the conference. It's a narrative that touches on the data, which is also shared in the conference, but also gives a narrative opportunity to talk about the whole child, their growth or opportunities, their challenges, their social, emotional skills, and so on and so forth. So we really invest a lot of time in preparing those reports to families. The students work with the teachers to prepare portfolios, which are samples of their work across the curriculum areas. And the teachers also use a system called work sampling, which is a fall to spring teacher assessment tool, which we primarily use in areas of math and literacy to supplement and support the MCA assessments, and also personal and social growth from fall to spring as well. Evaluation also happens in other ways for the child, the child really throughout their K-5 experience at Prairie Creek. And I think this is something which really aligns with Ryan's report as well. I expected to present a learning guide before an audience. For a kindergarten that can just be sharing things within their classroom to their peers, for a fifth grader can be a very involved presentation to family members, community members, and students in their class as well for their honors project. We're a community school, and that's one of the foundations of our mission statement. And it's something we're always looking to build upon and enhance. And it's something we're always looking to build upon and enhance the school traditions, which have been around as long as the school has existed, such as our May Day celebration, a reference to the beginning. We strongly encourage volunteers to come into the school and participate, not just in the governance and committee work, but also supporting the learning in the classroom. Families are invited throughout the year to attend learning fairs, project presentations, and engage with the children's learning as that happens. That's what's happening in the photograph on their PowerPoint there. It's a kindergarten, first grade reader's workshop, which parents and grandparents are attending. Parent education evenings, that's one of our initiatives that I'll talk about a little more in a moment, but trying to find time to bring parents into the school to share what we're doing on our mission and purpose. Community connections is also one of our big initiatives this year to work with parents to see as the school has grown from a school of sixty students back in the private school days to a hundred eighty students now, how do we keep a community piece alive? And we have a committee that's exploring ways to welcome new families and keep us connected with each other. And parents also are really involved in fundraising as well. We have parents who help with fundraising, auctions, and other initiatives throughout the year. We have a goal. It's a fairly lofty aspiration, our mission, that we will make the world a better place. And I think, you know, all good schools are making the world a better place by definition. This year is part of our non-academic focus. We decided to take a step back and think a little deeper about how we were doing with that. We had a board faculty retreat back in the fall where we examined the school's history, looking at issues like justice, social awareness, the social understanding that we have in the school. And an outcome of some of these conversations is that we've really focused in this year on service learning opportunities, both in the classroom and also in the broader community. We have a service night. Families are leading in February. And to get parents involved in, you know, asking this question with us, you know, what are we doing as families in terms of educating our children to help make our community and the broader world a better place to be? Progressive and child-centered learning. This really is the core of the school. The school, when it was founded, was really centered around the ethics of progressive education. And this, it's a very difficult thing to capture in a PowerPoint, because it's very much embedded within the culture of the school. And it starts by how we set up this learning environment. Certainly, being a small school gives us opportunities to focus in on the social curriculum. We take the first six weeks of the year to really spend time guiding the children on how to be together, how to play together, how working with the adults to model a kind and caring community. Multi-age is a huge piece of what we do to set up a child-centered environment, where children are aware of each other. So all the classes are multi-aged, but we also set up a system of bodies throughout the school where three children, one from each team, are connected through activities weekly, spending time together. And even in the recess or the beginning of the year, they have time to play and get to know each other before we open up for open play. This year, we're taking a look at social-emotional intelligence. I think there's a lot happening in the broader educational world at the moment about the significance of social-emotional learning for children and how our schools, public schools, can be a part of that. It's always been a part of our curriculum and our focus and our mission at Prairie Creek, but we've stepped back. We're doing some readings to get ready to see how our work on resilience, great habits of mind have influenced the school and what we can be more aware of going forward. Collaborations. Part of what we want to do is make sure we're investing in the broader education community and bringing other people into our small school out in Castle Rock. There's a number of ways that this happens. Through the course of being authorized by the school district for ten years, we've really been able to establish some excellent relationships with the Northfield Schools. The administration and board has always been very supportive and a great resource for us. We have a high school group, a senior class that's come out with Mr. Coles a number of times to work with our children. We have various projects going on with Arcadia throughout the year. And we also utilize the resources we have with two excellent colleges in our town. They support us with arts residencies, science and social studies projects, and their two education departments send students out to our school to volunteer and observe and to learn with us. We've got terrific connections with community groups, such as the Healthy Commuting Initiative. And I engaged this year with the Northfield Promise Movement here in town. And we also have just such a rich group of community experts here in Northfield. We're very fortunate, and we form relationships with experts and bring them in to enhance our professional development and to support students during thematic and project work. Just go back one there. Themes and personal projects. This will connect a little bit with what Ryan's going to talk about in his presentation, I think. A big part of the progressive tradition is interdisciplinary learning, and the students all engage in classroom themes throughout the year. Sometimes these themes engage more than one class, sometimes the whole school. Primarily, they're centered around science and social study areas. We have a system of thematic curriculum mapping throughout the school, so we have an awareness of what standard areas the children hit as they move through the K through five continuum. But the theme's also an opportunity to bring literacy and math skills into a real context that the children can relate to, and of course, the arts as well. Projects, we wouldn't call ourselves a project-based school, but projects are a big part of what we do at Prairie Creek. All students engage in independent projects every spring, K through five. And we're teaching project learning skills, which they're going to take into the next school environment, be it Arcadia, be it the middle school here in Northfield, that the students know how to research, how to wonder, how to know, how to pose questions, and how to prepare quality presentations. Our fifth graders do a capstone project, if you like, which is an in-depth study on an area of interest, supported by a mentor over a three-month period. The fourth and fifth graders all engage in something we call the village project for the last week of the school, where they set up a scaled-down village and their science and social studies integrated into that. And that's how they cap their year at Prairie Creek. The arts, critical to us, the meeting our mission for a child-centered progressive focus. The arts are a vehicle through which we can foster creativity and a love of learning, and for children to explore their talents in various formats. We have specialist teachers in the area of visual arts and music, but we also have arts embedded into thematic and classroom study, and a goal each year to engage the children in an in-depth arts residency. Last year, we worked with the Flying Foot Dance Company. This year, we're engaged in creating an opera with students from St. Olaf as part of their J-term that's underway right now. And we hope to be performing it, if all goes well, in the next two weeks on January the twenty-ninth in your middle school auditorium. So the residency is an opportunity for children to really dig deep into the arts, but also for us to come together as a whole school community around a project. So all hundred eighty students will participate in this opera. And we're just so fortunate to have a terrific resource like the colleges on our doorstep to support this. Extracurricular initiatives. Again, as the schools expanded, we've been looking at ways to enhance our program. This year, two new things we have going on with, we started a Prairie Creek orchestra. This has been a goal for the school for many years. We've been able to bring it to fruition this year. We're starting small. It's just open to fourth and fifth graders. We have fourteen students in our orchestra, which is led by the music teacher, Olivia Kruger. We're really excited about this. We think these children are going to go on from our school with a base in understanding the strings from which to be excited about engaging in music programs of the other schools they go to. We also have fifth graders who participate in the band with Mr. Jenny and have done for a number of years. We also started a Lego League club this year with Lego Robotics, and they've just participated in their first competition at regionals this weekend, and one of the groups is going to state. So we're pretty excited about that, and there's been a good energy around the Lego League. Environmental education. For most of you who've not been able to come out to our school, and I would encourage you to come and visit sometime if anyone else, to see the beautiful campus that we have at Prairie Creek. We're most fortunate with our rural setting out in Castle Rock. We have fields and woods that surround the school, and we work hard to embrace that as part of our outdoor learning curriculum. We've added a few things in the last couple of years, a butterfly garden, outdoor learning spaces with benches for the children to gather up, for doing things like nature journaling. And we spend a lot of time focusing on how we can engage children in creative play using the fantastic landscape they have around them. We also take the children outside of our school with a week at Wolf Ridge Environmental Learning Center every year. That's for our fifth graders every February. We have a couple of outdoor projects underway at the moment to sort of update you with where you are. We've had a fundraising drive, which we plan to use the funds for newer play equipment. We're just in the process of exploring what that will be. And we are also exploring options to create a rooftop garden. We have a little work to do yet with the insurance company. We have a few safety issues regarding that, but hopefully it will come together. It would be wonderful. Professional development. And again, I think Ryan will be able to talk about what this looks like in his school, and there's certain similarities in that we really do try and develop a professional culture where we're a learning community together. Professional development is centered on the school mission and goals. We create a plan to cover two academic and two non-academic goals that we focus our work around every year. There's a teacher-led committee structure, so the professional development teams are teamed into three to four teachers together who are planning weekly sessions for the rest of the staff. Topics this year, we're focused in on math, literacy, we're looking at social-emotional intelligence in a very focused way this year. The staff meets every Wednesday for a two-hour professional development session on the late start day. We meet in the evening instead of in the morning to facilitate that on the block of time. We typically have a faculty book club. This year, we're reading Paul Tough's book, How Children Succeed, because it digs deep into some of those non-academic pieces we're interested in. And it also gives us a forum to invite speakers in to come into our two-hour sessions. The staff also finish the year with a two-day retreat where we reflect on the work that we did that year, and before we leave for the summer, some start to look forward to the following year. Teacher evaluation. All teachers are evaluated every year, or staff are evaluated every year by myself. We go through a process where, a little bit like we do with the children, where we're setting goals together in the fall, going through classroom observations in the winter months, and giving feedback at the end of the year. There's a faculty member and myself, we're trained in the cognitive coaching practices. We do that as a collaboration with the Northfield program that we appreciated, and that's really influenced the conversations we have about staff evaluation. And in line with the requirements that this year, we've been developing a revised teacher evaluation plan. A draft has been made, but it still needs to be reviewed by the staff and board this spring. I think we found when we dug deep into that that we're meeting the requirements for a good practice for evaluating staff, but there's opportunities to go a little bit deeper, and we've articulated this into our plan. And particularly, we're interested in generating a program for peer evaluation, where teachers within the teams are giving each other feedback on a more regular basis and a more structured basis. So I think peer coaching is going to be something we'll be talking about this spring, and how we can do that together, as well as meeting the requirements of the Minnesota Financial management. There's more detail in the packet that you have, but in very simple terms, we've managed to maintain a solid fund balance goal throughout the year with a steady increase, as you can see from that graph. We currently have a thirty-four point nine percent fund balance. Like all charter schools, we've been riding the last few years of uncertainty over school funding. And following the good advice, charter schools and small schools should carry a very healthy balance up to an above thirty percent, and we've really been very conservative and very careful in doing that. We're now at the point where our board and finance committee and chief financial officer, Keith Johnson, are having conversations around what is the forecasted state funding, what is our five-year plan, and can we actually start utilizing some of this fund balance as we go forward? But always, always with a five-year projection. We've made a couple of staffing changes, which are certainly going to influence our five-year projection when we start meeting to review budget this year, primarily a slight increase in the music teacher role to support the orchestra program. And we also added a part-time school nurse this year. It's been a tremendous asset and improvement for the health services we offer children and families, but we want to make sure we can sustain that going forward. But as you can see, we're starting from a very healthy financial position. A few current initiatives to close out before I hand over to Ryan, and we'll have time for questions at the end, if you want to come back to any of these slides. Key things we've had going on in the past couple of years and the current year that we're in now. We're establishing an education program committee. We're looking at the World's Best Workforce Initiative, like everyone else is, and seeing how Prairie Creek is going to fit into that in terms of establishing a strategic plan that's going to meet the goals of that initiative. We already have a literacy and a math plan in place, but we need to be sure that we're aligned with the requirements, and also look at it as an opportunity to see how we can be sustainable, both as a public school accountable to state requirements, but also a progressive school accountable to the mission that we've had for thirty years. Facility management. The building expanded with the school growth initiative four years ago. We're now a very serious building to manage, and over the course of the last twelve months, we've worked with the facility management group to provide oversight of operations. We're in the first few months of that, and it's going really well. And again, we want to make that a sustainable part of the school's future. I touched upon five-year financial forecasting. As always, with uncertainty in the monies that we receive from the state, where we're looking into the future and making projections this spring, but not just the next year, but five years down the line. We've been able to do some really positive adjustments to our staff salary scale. We added an additional tier to support the teachers who've been at the school for a long period of time. We have marvelous teachers, and we want to motivate them in lots of different ways to stay. So we were able to make a higher-tier adjustment to some of our financial forecasting, what does that look like if all our teachers stay? And school safety. We, too, just like the district, are part of school safety conversations. We're doing a few upgrades to our building. We're adding a security door to the front of the building, so we can have a little tighter process that are managing visitors into the school. That will be happening in the next few months. And we're also currently in review of our crisis management plan, looking at how we can take onboard the recommendations from can take on board the recommendations from Rice County and others upon how to respond to intruder situations, so we have some work to do there as well, which will be part of the rest of the year. And with that, thanks for your time, I'm going to hand over to Ryan.
You might be regretting now if both of us. No. You know, there's so many pieces to try and fit into these presentations, so definitely, I mean, if there's anything you guys have questions about or above and beyond, just make sure to ask. I started off with Arcadia's mission statement and we are not lacking words for our mission statement, but it is the mission of Arcadia Charter School to prepare students to transition intellectually, emotionally and ethically to higher education and future employment. A big piece of, you know, years ago when we were going through a mission statement, it was coming up with, you know, the the big piece of that high school programming and getting kids, what's the next step? And a lot of that fits into this, you know, the next piece of World's Best Workforce is looking at those career investigation and where are kids thinking about going and then are they getting their bang for their buck in post-secondary? I'm going to talk a little bit about our program and we have two programs, we have both middle school and high school, so we have six through eight middle school program and a nine, twelve high school program, we're project-based, although I tell everybody that we're a hybrid of project-based, we do have core classes, especially in our middle school programming. And in our high school, beginning in ninth grade, we have a more structured ninth grade program that is building those skills and those that knowledge base to be able to go and do some of those projects, to do some of the higher level critical thinking. Our enrollment cap is one hundred and twenty-six students and we've been authorized by the Northfield School District since two thousand and three. Our middle school program, when you look at our middle school program, we do developmental designs, a character ed program, Simon had mentioned that they do responsive classroom, we do the next level up, which would be the middle school programming of that. Our developmental designs piece includes a social contract that we do at the beginning of the year and that's the entire school that does that, both our high school advisors and our middle school advisors getting together and sitting down and saying, how are we going to work together for this year? And we look at it every single year and then the kids get together and they all sign that contract together and we have a big celebration at the end of that first week. When we think of the middle school in particular, we really look at that, the first three weeks were thirty-three, so we're really focusing on what, how are we working together, what are our non-negotiables, what are the things that the rules that we have in place and what are the things that we're going to be doing this year? And we're building those then for the next thirty-three weeks of the school year to be Our middle schoolers start off with morning circle and that morning circle includes a greeting, it includes a share and it includes some sort of activity, we try to get people moving around a little bit and burn a little energy as we go to. Each of the terms that we have, we have four terms and then we have a May term, each of the terms has a theme in the middle school and the project process within the middle school is driven by that theme each term. This year, we started off the first term with the Renaissance and then we went to exploration for term two and then we have cycles and flight for the last two. Those those themes are broad themes so that we can have kids have a lot of different projects that can fit within that, but it gives them a little bit of guidance that our core classes also are able to interject into and have a lot of interdisciplinary learning happening together. To give you a typical day in the middle school, like I mentioned, we start off with morning circle and then we have an hour of multi-age project work time, so our middle school advisors are six through eight. And that project work time, a lot of that theme talk, a lot of that guidance for the the project in general, happens in that first time together, multi-aged. Every kid has a mathematics course that they're in and we do level that, we do a math six, a pre-algebra and algebra, but we're looking at where does the kid fit best and what is going to be their best building blocks to further them within mathematics. And then they have a rotation of grade-level project work time and core classes throughout the remainder of the day and then we get to the last hour of the day and middle schoolers have elective time during that time, so we have dance, we have theater, we have some PE, we have computers and some group projects and stuff that are happening during that The high school program, then when we think of high school program, we think of the number of credits it takes to graduate, we have twenty-three credits to graduate including the in the areas of the Minnesota State Standards. The one addition that we have is we have two credits of the arts that students have to fulfill in order to graduate and our students need to do a senior project. In their senior year, that project, in many times, many cases, three hundred plus hours put into a project that is either going down a that journey, that path, where they're going next and what their high school education has led them to, or it's very much a passion, it's what they're interested in doing. It might be what they're interested in post-secondary or it could be even a hobby that they're very much interested in. The typical day in in the high school, like Simon mentioned with his school, I could tell you that there isn't really a typical day, they're all different. The schedule for high school students is very tailored, a lot of times I equate that to what you might see with a college schedule, you have classes that are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you have classes that are Tuesday, Thursday and the student and the advisor are sitting down, we have a preschool conference, we have fall conferences, we have winter conferences and in that, we're always looking at the schedule, every term we're looking at the schedule and the kids are scheduling in courses that they might be in, projects that they're doing and so their day, although it can look very different from kid to kid, has a schedule set and the kids are managing their time. One of the things that a lot of our alumni come back and tell us is that when they went off to college, they felt very confident in being able to manage their schedule and register for those college classes and nobody was telling them where they needed to go, they just got up and they did it and they managed their time and they they equated that to years of practice and, you know, when we look at college freshmen, we know that's a struggle, so we're very happy to have our kids coming out with that skill. So the next couple of slides, I wanted to talk about specifically the project process. The project process for middle school versus high school, it is different, they're different developmental levels and with middle schoolers, like I mentioned, it follows the theme and it's very directed, it is centered around that theme, the students have a lot of choice within the theme and they look at something that they might be interested in. So this next term right now is cycles and so we're looking at different cycles, both within social studies, within nature, within history, cycles that might be happening and those kids then, once they're choosing that topic, it's very much a process and they're looking at what do they know already, what are they wondering? If you know everything about this, why are we doing this project, we should be looking at another topic. And they're looking at, they're scaling it to, with the help of their advisors, to be something that is also manageable. We all know that kids will pick topics that are really, really huge and they also know that they'll pick topics that are, we could cover that in a day. So it is really working with that student and in doing that, it is that relationship that's being built between the advisor and the student. The students then also have a skill that's being built throughout the term, so each term has a designated presentation skill that they have, so one term it might be some sort of electronic presentation, maybe a PowerPoint or a Prezi or or a video, the next term might be a poster board, so they need a physical something, the next term is a create, make, do, so there's some sort of model to go with it. And then the fourth term is typically their choice, something that they either liked doing or they needed more experience with. And then in addition to that, we try to work in things like our third term is always a service learning term and so the projects, we try to focus them towards some sort of service to the community. The high school project process is, there's a lot more variation to it. The high school students have project ideas that they present to their advisors, advisors that are also helping them decide that you you need to cover these standards or we need credit in this area, so we need to do a project in this area, but we also have elective credit and so they have a lot of autonomy, they have a lot of choice within that too. Their project process starts with presenting or proposing a project to two staff members, one staff member being their advisor, another staff member being licensed in the area or the main area of that project. And then they sit down together and they map out the timeline for completing that project, what things that they want to work on, what things that they're going to do to achieve either the Minnesota State Standard or to achieve their goals for the project. Then throughout that process, the reason there's more variation is the high school project could be two weeks, the high school project could be the entire term, nine weeks. In the case of a senior project, it takes sometimes three terms for them to do that. And then in the end, they finalize that present, that project to the two staff members that they had proposed it with and then also to community members. Our middle schoolers present their projects to their entire advisory and so they start off at a really young age, presenting to thirty people right away in the first term. Our high schoolers have a little more variation in that they could present to a round table, they might have five, six people, or they might present in our great room to forty people. And then all of our students have the opportunity to present during our presentation nights and those are, students are required to do two presentation nights a year, we have three of them and then we have a senior presentation night as well in the spring and they can present, it's an abbreviated presentation. Our last presentation day that we did in December, we had eighty-two projects presented and we had a couple of hours to do that in the afternoon, so they get ten minutes and then we cut them off and we we keep going and we try to ensure everybody that the finalization was a was a much longer process and a lot more in-depth than presentation day, so. So that's our present, our project process. I did put up some accountability scores as well, you have that in the annual report and you also have it on the data sheet. Reading continues to be a strong, we have avid readers in Arcadia, our students do really well with it, although we saw a decline this year with the MCA test, the state also saw a large decline, we were fortunate to not see as much, we saw about eight percent. So we did really well with with keeping up with that. Mathematics continues to be a struggle for our students, middle school has stayed relatively flat, although we're trying to move and make changes and adjustments to it, our high school, we saw a tremendous increase in our high school from last year to this year and we actually were very close behind, just behind the state in that. With mathematics, it is a a struggle for us to identify the variation of students that we have coming in in sixth grade with mathematics and identifying where they need to be placed and then trying to catch up in some cases too. We do have students, we have students that come from all over, from Randolph, from Farmington, from Northfield Schools, fed students in sixth grade come from all of the elementary schools in the Northfield School District, in Prairie Creek and North Strand, it's fantastic to have that array of students, but it also means a very different array of students and that we're trying to match up together with those math courses. The growth piece for us, we continue to see high growth within our reading scores and with mathematics, we are trying to make some adjustments with that as well, we saw higher growth the previous year in the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year, but relatively close to the same when you look at the population size, we have a hundred and twenty students. Of those students, there's sixty to seventy students that are actually taking the math test, both middle school and in the eleventh grade, so you start to look at that, a lot of our students will count for two to three percent in these changes, so if we have two or three students off, that changes, it can be ten percent difference. When we also look at accountability, we're looking at where students are going outside of our, after our school and when they graduate, we have students that are going to two-years, four-year schools, we have students that choose to do rotary exchanges and international experiences and we have students that get into a variety of schools, public and private schools. This last year, we saw students to the University of Minnesota, University of the Atlantic, St. Benedict's, University of Puget Sound, Luther, Gustavus, Fort Lewis College, so we send, we send kids in a lot of different directions into some great schools. The innovative programming piece, when we start to look at that, there's so many different things to pick from, so I try to pick a couple of them to highlight, a lot of small things happen all the time, we're bringing in community members and so I apologize to my staff instead of not highlighting every little piece, but a couple of the big pieces, we do a lot of arts at our school, both visual arts and theater, everybody I think knows Bob Gregory Brooklyn, we're fortunate to have him on staff and so he does a lot for us. I'll talk a little bit about May Term and then teacher evaluation and we've done Q Camp for the last ten years. Theater programming, this last year, we did two theater shows, we did a middle school performance of My Empress They Close and we did a high school performance of The Laramie Project, a very controversial play, but it involved community members and community actors as well. And the kids, we had a group of students that came through that, they got stretched as actors and they all, every one of them came out of it thanking Bob for this play, so it was a fantastic opportunity. This next spring, I think we are planning on doing Peter Pan and our high school students will be participating with the Guthrie's students on stage, our schools on stage and it's going to be collaboratively with Northfield High School students as well that want to participate, so. We also, this last year, we got spoken word artist Desa come in for a week and work with our students, both middle school and high school students and accommodate with the presentation at the end. Both the students got to present or perform and then they got to hear Desa performing. So this year, we're hoping to find another spoken word artist, Desa is busy this year, hopefully we'll move her to the next year, if she, if she'll come back. The other piece for us, a big one that people talk about for us is May Term and it's how we close our school year, it's the last three weeks of the year. May Term, I kind of tell people, it's like J-Term for college, you get, you pick a course or you pick a specialized area, in this case, sometimes students will pick two half-days courses that they'll work on for the last two and a half weeks. This came out of, after our first year doing project-based learning and coming to the end of the year and everybody with the crunch and the stress of trying to finalize all of their projects in the last week of school, we we ended that first year and we said we got to do something different with the end of the year and we said, well, what if we have a kind of a, we did a specific experiential programming piece at the end of the school year and and May Term came out of it. It is multi-age, sixth graders can work, or sixth and eighth graders can work with high school students, high school students love the opportunity to work with some of the other kids and it really does re-focus and re-interject the kids, they leave the school year just jazzed as opposed to burnt out and ready for three months, so. The the other piece, teacher evaluation in Q Camp, with much of the the legislature and the changes to teacher evaluation or the addition of the teacher evaluation laws, Arcadia has been fortunate in that we have been doing Q Camp since the two thousand and four, five school year, although that has evolved a lot for us over the years for our staff development, many of the pieces that are in the the teacher evaluation law are the stuff that we've had put in place and that we've been working on. We've met a number of times over the fall and then into December with the Q Camp team at the Minnesota Department of Ed, through a number of workshops to look at, okay, this is Q Camp, this is teacher evaluation, where do we line up, where do we go and and a lot of those pieces are in place and we're pretty happy about that, so. We, this last year, we also took on a program called Teachcape, which is an online database to track observations for teachers and allows them to put information into and and work collaboratively. We did the cognitive coaching training with the Northfield School District a couple of years ago and we've tried to continue that on as well, getting additional staff trained in cognitive coaching and really working on that peer observation coaching opportunities for staff as part of their teacher evaluation. The Q Camp program has us do cycle goals in particular, we could do as as little as one cycle goal a year, we actually split it up by semester and we do two cycle goals. This last, last spring, we focused on classroom management across the board, all disciplinary areas, disciplinary, sorry, yeah, disciplinary areas. And focused on that, we did a number of different book groups and the staff really felt like they had this guided, focused staff development, which they love, and then this first semester of this year, we took the topic of project-based learning and really said, let's look at project-based learning and how is it and really said, let's look at project-based learning, and how is it working at Arcadia, and really reevaluating those components, and refocusing everybody together on what we do at Arcadia, and it has been phenomenal. It's something we should do every other year. And just to energize everybody back up, and be talking about, this is why we do what we I thought I should throw in some financial management as well, which is good, that's a fantastic ramp, and we'd love to see that. The fund balance, this last year, we added about forty-seven thousand dollars to our fund balance, our goal is two percent every year. For that, for us, is about twenty-eight to twenty-nine thousand dollars, so we were above our two percent goal. So we are steadily moving up and putting ourselves into a really great place. With the holdbacks in all of those pieces, Arcadia has, you know, lines of credit to do cash flow on those pieces, we were thrilled last year to never access a line of credit, which is fantastic. And in doing so, and looking at those pieces, the board is also trying to be very cognizant of saying, okay, we have this fund balance, we need to continue to grow that, we need to, we're seeing success with that, and we need to continue that going, but also that we want to make sure our program is staying strong as well in doing those pieces. So talking with Dr. Richardson last year, and looking at those pieces, the board did take twenty thousand dollars this last summer and put it towards technology, to introduce additional technology into our school and update a few things. Hopefully, we will continue to move along those lines, especially in the cases where we've got above our two percent goal, and put that money towards student programming. The other big initiative piece that we went through this last year is we did strategic planning. We did strategic planning beginning last winter, and moved through months of gathering information with our community, having a number of evenings that were both for parents and staff members, and then, and board members, and then we moved into taking our teaching staff and our board members, and looking at that data and trying to put things together, where does the community want us to move forward on a strategic plan? The board came up with six goals for us to work on moving forward, and we kind of, we really finalized those in about November. So it was, it was a lengthy process, but it was a good process. A lot of people were able to get their voice in. The big, one of the big ones for us is looking at facility. We have a ten-year lease, we are in the third year of a ten-year lease on our facility, but now is, time is of the essence to decide, do we stay in the location that we're at? Do we look to expand, what are we looking to do long-term? Our education goals that they put together, one of them was looking at project-based learning, and so our staff actually jumped on that, and that's why Q-Camp, we did that piece of it. Like I said, we should do it every other year, it's been fantastic. And then the other one is for our education committee to be looking at additional programming pieces, innovative programming pieces to interject into our school. That fit for our school as well. When you look at a school that has, you know, a nine-to-two program that's seventy-two students, so it has to be something that equates to the size we are. The other, the other three we have, looking at marketing, trying to market more effectively. Are we putting money towards marketing that really isn't drawing people as much as word of mouth, and people that we talk to in our program, or are people actually seeing some of those advertising pieces? So we have a marketing committee that we're establishing. Looking at fundraising, like every school, we're constantly looking for additional funding sources, so putting together a team for that. And then the last one for us is looking at transportation. Something for us that's a continual frustration is transportation for anything from field trips to PE using the Armory, and what is cost-effective? And so the board put it together as, you know, we should at least research, you know, if we had a twenty-passenger bus, to do something like that. When we talk about field trips, and we want to take a graduating class of students, which we have, is about eighteen to twenty students, our option is to get a fifty-passenger bus from Benjamin Bus. So looking at more cost-effective ways of doing that, and things that are also help us to be timely with it, so that we can have a class that says, I have this great opportunity next week to take kids to the Guthrie, because we're going to go up on the stage, and they can do that, as opposed to something that has to be planned out sometimes three months in advance. So the last piece of it, Simon talked a little bit about community collaboration in those pieces. Really, the two of us looking at all the different ways that we can collaborate together, and how we've tried to start collaborating more with the school district, with HCI. The Northfield Promise has been a fantastic way to have conversations about some of the things that we are doing very similar, and then some of the things that we can learn from each other. I think those are opportunities for us to advance further, and we've learned so much from the school district and from larger programs than us, and likewise, we hope that, I think, that people will take from us some of the things that we've been able to try, because we're small, and say that, oh, this would be really great in our setting too. So looking for more of those collaborative ways. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, I think it's important for the board to know, and I think we probably say this every year, that I think we both feel so fortunate that we can pick up a phone and call our advisor and get advice and support from Dr. Richardson, and many of his administrative staff at any time. So for us, we're little islands in our small school, and to be able to have a district as a resource is a phenomenal collaboration for us, and hopefully that's just getting structured.
We talked to many other charter school directors, it is a fantastic setup that we have, in that we have a relationship, we have somebody, like Simon said, we can pick up the phone and talk to somebody, and not, in some cases, I think some of our peers that have adversarial almost relationships with their, with their authorizers.
Board members, questions?
Yeah. I really enjoyed this presentation and the work that you do, and it's been a very professional presentation, but one of the highlights that I just wanted to mention again, that you, Simon, I think, brought up at the beginning, is the, what you bring to the community, and then, I was thinking especially about the Flying Foot Forum at the White Center, I happened to participate in that, and, you know, I was dancing with your students, you know? And it was absolutely fabulous, and there were, there were little children, and there were grandparents, and it was a really, really wonderful experience for the community, and I'm also very excited to hear about the orchestra program. So good work, it was great.
Other comments or questions?
Just wanted to say, also, sort of connected to what Ann said, that I'm really grateful that you're so welcoming of people from the community in your schools, and that you really take advantage of a lot of the expertise that's out in the community, and you make it easy to participate, so that it, they really do become community schools for more than just the people who are students there, and the teachers. Just this morning, I was at Good Bible Monday, and with my friend Cecilia, who showed me this amazing senior project that I think Ricky Gooden did of skateboarding, and, you know, for him to be able to work with a professional filmmaker on a senior project is a great opportunity, and I've been to both schools as a volunteer in various projects, and I hope that you never change, because I really, I love those opportunities. I did have a question for Simon about, when you talk about being a community school, I know that, I remember you mentioned to me once, a little frustration that while you're a community school, you can't be a neighborhood school for Castle Rock, and I wonder if you could talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I can, that's connected to the charter school law around admissions. At the moment, we can only give preference through our entrance lottery to siblings of children from being in the school, and children of staff members. Way back at the beginning of the charter school law, which was started over twenty years ago now, I think there was a provision to school to be able to give a preference in the lottery to families who lived within a two-mile radius of the school. That was taken away a few years ago, and so that means our local families in Castle Rock have to go through the lottery process like everyone else. Our waitlist isn't so vast, it means they won't necessarily get it, but it can and has happened for one or two really local families. And I think that's unfortunate, there's a Minnesota Association of Charter Schools every year has a legislative agenda, and that is one of the questions that's been brought up for them to pursue this year, whether it's possible to revisit that preference for local residents. And I was actually one of the authors of a proposal, and they look at that along with another community school in Minnesota. So that's unfortunate, but I love that, that's a background to why that is. So Ann, answer your question.
Yeah, thanks.
Other comments or questions?
Julie? Okay, I have questions actually for both Simon and Ryan. I'll start with Simon. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the work sampling, and what types of performance assessment that is, just trying to understand a little bit more, your reports sort of detail the different categories, but just if you could talk about how it's administered, and does it involve a formal assessment at some point, and does it measure individual growth for students over, you know, across grade levels?
Yeah, but work sampling is a tool that the school has used, I think, since its inception as a charter school. We don't administer the math test, so we don't have a fall-to-spring measurement tool in the sense that the map is a one-time snapshot of our children doing at most different phases. The work sampling measures the children on a three-point scale are not yet in process proficiency measure. It is administered by the teachers about the children in the class, so it's subjective in the sense that the teachers are entering that data into a database in the fall and the spring, and then they're doing that, and then we are able to assess the growth of the child in areas of literacy and math. The statements in work sampling in math and literacy do align to the state's standards, so we use those as a professional development tool as well to align the assessment to our curriculum. What we like about it is it gives the teachers an opportunity to be reflective about the child, the teachers are administering formal benchmarks, formative benchmark assessments throughout the year of literacy and math, and then they can utilize the data that they collected on the children when selecting where that child is on that proficiency statement. So we've been able to use it, it's also something we're able to administer kindergarten through fifth grade, where of course, our issue was BMCA only gave us the data for fifth grade.
Okay. So if I understand it, if the student reaches proficient, you don't then get any other measures for that student beyond that?
No, we don't, not, not at all, we don't. But that's again, where we're using other evaluation tools, such as the narrative reporting on families and the formative assessments throughout the year, to give the family a report on how the child is going to be on that assessment tool. But you are right, it's not nuanced beyond that three-point scale.
So when someone tests in those other categories, what sort of interventions take place to get them up to the proficient level?
Yeah, the teachers are looking at that data, and while we have a targeted services we're using within the schools for children who are in that not yet or in process state for title and special education services, and the teachers within the classrooms are looking at interventions with the child in small groups and as individuals, we only have twenty students per class. Our literacy planning grades K through three has a series of fall, winter, and spring assessments in the different aspects of literacy as well, so we're able to get a targeted measure for child's progress.
Okay. So then on the other end of the scale, the proficient, is there enrichment-type activities that occur for those students then?
Yeah, we don't have an enrichment program in a traditional sense of a gifted and talented program. I do think that really is embedded in the progressive learning approach of the school, in that every child is continually being challenged in a growth environment. We're a multi-age school, so students are constantly working with children who are older than them until they get to fifth grade, obviously, but they have an opportunity to be challenged and motivated by working with older children of the year. We have individual projects and things where the children are encouraged to explore, be challenged and to grow as well. But it's not through the process of a traditional poll and a gifted, funded program, we expect the teacher to know the child well enough to provide those growth opportunities within the regular school day.
Okay. And then I had one other question. I was looking through last year's report, and you talked about the school-wide math plan that was approved last year by the Prairie Creek School Board, and just wondering how it has possibly changed math instruction across the grade levels, and, you know, what were some of the successes and challenges that maybe you saw from that school-wide math plan?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Well, I think on a very, you saw some of the data, maybe it's more detailed data in the report, just in terms of the growth in the state standardized measure with our math students, we're now above proficiency in the area of math. I think that's been a cumulative result of many years of looking at our math program. I think the challenge is for us is very deep staff conversation around a compromise to progressive ideals in order to have a greater focus on the foundational areas of math. This is something we have very careful conversation about, and I think as part of that process, I believe there's still, there's a fundamental commitment to the progressive ideals within the teaching of math, but it should connect with themes, it should connect with authentic learning for the children, but also a realization that we have to be, we have to be honest enough to look at our math program over the years and see what we've learned about the children's need for foundational skills. Children do need to know in order to wander in the area of math as well. We've taken, as part of our math plan work, we took a really detailed look at the math standards and how our curriculum aligned with that. We invested in some curriculum, we invested in some everyday math curriculum that we're now using as a sort of scope and sequence structure for our K-five range, and our early years are also using Think Math. So I believe we're at a point where we have a balanced math curriculum. We've looked at the reality of, that we've had to address math as more of a discrete subject in order to get to those foundational skills, and make sure that our former substantive assessments are tight enough that we know how the children are progressing, so there's an assessment plan now that's aligned with that math plan. It's only our second year of following this plan, so now we're really in conversation about how's that influencing children, and asking the tough questions back, are they still as excited about math as they used to be? And so these are deep professional development questions for us, but I do believe we've made a commitment to math, which is appropriate based on the early years of the school history, and perhaps children are performing to the level they needed to in preparation for going to other schools.
Okay, good, excellent, thank you.
Carrie?
I just want to thank you for an excellent report. I really, really liked this idea of presenting together, because I think there is such a natural progression between the approaches that the two schools take, and it helps me kind of see them next to each other, to see the ways that you approach progressive learning and project-based learning at the different grade levels, so I found that very, very helpful. And I'm wondering if we can get your PowerPoint maybe emailed to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be really helpful. I just had one, just one quick question, I think a lot of good questions have already been asked, but Simon, you've had great success in, with your science at Prairie Creek, and is there some, what's your, what's your secret?
We were asked this question last year, and I wish I had a neat answer for you, because it always intrigues me as well, because we have over the years been fairly consistent, consistently above the state averages in the fifth grade math assessment. It's not something we're doing test prep for. From what I've seen and what I'm aware of, how the fifth grade math assessment differs to- to... Sorry, thank you. That's why the board chair is saying a lot of other things. It's a new science assessment, provides a real opportunity for critical thinking. The children are presented, it's an online assessment, the children are presented with different scenarios from the various aspects of the scientific curriculum, and they have to do some thinking and problem solving in response to them. That does align a lot to how we approach science throughout thematic and project work, that children are expected to explore and to think and have that kind of academic agility in how they approach a curricular areas. We're always cautious with this data though. It's a snapshot of 30 kids. But it is interesting that we're not following a traditional textbook curriculum, and yet the children seem very comfortable with that assessment. That's the best I've got for you, sorry.
Interesting. Thank you.
Other? No?
Present. At Prairie Creek, you have an impressive operating budget, I'm sorry, fund balance versus your operating budget. And how much of it is assigned? The number you quoted is the unassigned, which is 39 points. After the report, 30 points. How much of it is assigned?
It's up in my head. I don't know.
You mean assigned for a specific spending line?
Yeah.
Zero. We've been talking about going forward next year, starting to call out some line items for computers and other small capital expenditure, but right now it's not assigned.
Thank you.
Are there questions, comments? Julie?
I had a question for Ryan. Let's see, when you were talking about the non-academic goals in the annual report, you talked about you're developing a school strategic plan for the next five to 10 years? And I was wondering where in the process you are of developing that plan?
That was, that was the six goal statements that the board came up with. We are, we're really done with that strategic planning process.
Okay.
Our hope is really for those five of those six goals, probably over the next five years is what kind of came out of our process.
So the goals were in the annual report?
They're in the PowerPoint. They're in the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, we were in the middle of that process when the annual report was, was being developed. So, or ready.
Then another question I had, not being totally familiar with how QComp funding, QComp funding works.
Yep.
If you set forth academic goals and you don't achieve those goals, is there ramifications to funding for that?
Each year, the QComp plan each year has, you take the funding that is assigned from QComp, which is, I think, the last year, $240 some dollars per student. And that's per ATM, not per model. And within that plan, teachers have a performance pay. And that performance pay is paid out if the goals are met. If they are not met, they're not paid out to those teachers, but the funding stays with the school. It actually goes towards fund balance. Yeah. Yeah, that was something that was questioned even in the first couple of years of QComp, what was tracking, who was tracking what? So the plan is whether or not the funds will be paid out as a performance pay piece.
Okay. Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to echo what others have said. I think the presentation was great. I loved seeing it together. And I loved hearing that you two feel like you're strong support for each other and that your relationship is strong because I think that benefits not only you, but, you know, everyone. So, that's really wonderful.
Any other questions? I have two, so. Okay. I just have one for each. I think the board members have covered almost all of them. And I echo the joint presentation. I hope that we get to see this today again. And the project, both of you spending so much time about the project, based on, I found really helpful. Sko Gregerson was the speaker at the Staff Appreciation Breakfast, and she talked about the Village Project. So it's neat to hear about, and then getting a chance to see them at Arcadia. So I guess I'll start with the Prairie Creek question I had actually asked Simon, and I think we're going to have some more discussions, but I wondered if you could touch just briefly on, we've been grappling as a board with looking at the change in demographics of our community and how to address that in the learning environments and ensure that the balance that our schools is reflecting the balance of the community. And I know you said you've been grappling with that issue as well, and I just wondered if you had just some initial thoughts to share.
Yeah, well, I'll start by saying, you know, to see the characteristics of our student population, there's a pretty involved table in your report which goes back five years. And the trends have been pretty constant, that we have a fairly low population of students of color. I think last year was 8%. I think the district population runs around 16%. You can tell me if I'm wrong on that, so we're not quite representative there. Our demographics might be more similar to somewhere like Bridgewater. But we've explored as a staff, you know, what does it mean to be representative of the community within which a school resides? And we're certainly not in terms of the racial makeup of our school. We made diversity and cultural awareness one of the non-academic goals last year of our program. There's a summary of some of the things we did in your report. Some were more sort of philosophical things. We had book clubs that we read Lisa Delvis, Paul Kat, Julie Landsman came and visited us to give us a perspective on things we could be more aware of in a predominantly white population school. And we did some tangible things too, such as reviewing our curriculum, seeing how welcoming our school was to students of color, translating the application documents into Spanish, making sure we had Spanish-speaking staff, open houses, and so on and so forth. So my hope is that over time, that trend will change and we will certainly have Hispanic students in our school. And when we started briefly talking about this, I think there's also opportunities for collaboration on this and to encourage the district to help that families be aware of school choice within, within the district which we're part of and that they have the opportunity just to apply to these with tuition through schools. And we're hoping that will change, but it's definitely something we're thinking about. We feel we've become much more representative in terms of our special education population offering, reduced population is standard to a very similar to the traditional schools, but not so the diversity of our population. So it's a terrific question and one we're very aware of.
Thank you. Thanks. And then just one quick question for you, Ryan, and this is because you're the math expert. So you talked about the report. I was really impressed that, you know, you're very honest about what you have. And can you talk a little bit about how you can differentiate, the differentiated instruction that maybe you have to, you have these kind of, the bimodal, the students that are high-flying and the students that are really kind of trying to come to terms with the foundational math?
Yeah, and very much so. So our population, a lot of times I describe our population from a math perspective, is bimodal in that we have students that are really good in mathematics, we have students that really struggle with the mathematics, and then we have very few in the middle. And so within our classes, we do differentiate quite a bit. And when you think of differentiating within a math course, how many, you know, how many groups or subgroups can you break it into? And it starts to, you know, after you get two or three groups and you start to spread people out. We have, we team teach in some cases and try to get additional people in there. This last year, I taught sixth grade mathematics and I had a special education teacher in there with me as well, as well as a para to try and differentiate even more to that. In some cases for us, some of the students that are coming in can be two to three grade levels below or are coming in, when you think of proficiency within the MCAs, when you're coming in not proficient already, the next year, you're taking the next grade level's assessment. So I was taking fifth grade, I'm now taking sixth grade, and I was not proficient here. I'm not going to be proficient in the next one. And what we've seen with NWA MAP data is we do have kids showing growth. We have kids showing a year's worth of growth, but in some cases needing two to three years' worth of growth within mathematics. And that's not, and those kids can maybe struggle with mathematics, but reading Excel through the road. When I started with Art Tech at the time in that first year, and you looked at the population of students that we brought in, they were not students that were coming to Art Tech for mathematics. It really was a large bulk of those math teacher to try to change their view on mathematics more than how far it was going to get them to move up on the test. We've come least in bounds with that. The struggle I think that we have right now is middle school in particular in that we stayed flat the last couple of years. We have kids showing growth, we have kids making tremendous improvement within mathematics. But to get really from an MCA perspective, to get them to the next piece, they need assistance beyond just the school day. In some cases, they need to be outside the school day too.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
You bet.
Any other? No?
Well, I would thank both of you.
Just a brief comment. Again, Simon and Ryan very much appreciate your leadership in each of your buildings. It's, it is a very positive situation. And having met with the authorizers from across the state over the course of time, what I've found with both of you that you are never afraid to ask the questions or pick up the phone and call, and you always are willing, I think, whether it's my question or whether it's one of the board members' questions, to really give it really diligence in terms of thinking about where things are going. I also really appreciate the fact that as you strive to try to create choice programming and where you strive to try to maintain that progressive school and project-based programming that you also have come to grips with and understand the fact that as part of being a charter public school, you have some expectations in terms of the kinds of performance that you need to provide and also share with the communities. And I think both of you have done a really good job of helping your parent community and your school community to kind of understand that kind of new delicate balance that you have between trying to maintain that strong progressive perspective and yet understanding that as a public school, you had their expectations and accountability to make that happen. I think obviously, Simon, it's probably all you're doing because actually you mentored him, right? But actually, the other thing we know is that when it comes to actually creating the reports, actually Ryan is mentoring you. The great thing is, as we've kind of worked over the course of the last couple of years with the new more stringent authorizer requirements, these guys have worked very closely with me to help put their reports together and to put, when I come out to do site visits, to put the site visit data together so we can really go right through these pieces and deal with that. And also, I think, give me an opportunity as a superintendent in the authorizing district to actually go out, talk to teachers, to talk to board members, to talk to kids, to talk to others in terms of staff within your, within your building, and really to get a very honest perspective, I think, from folks about how they're feeling about the program. And what I would say to you is, in both cases, the response pack has been very positive. And so, you know, kudos for working well with us and also working well with each other because I think it really makes a difference.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. We are ready to move on to the next set of items on our agenda, which is the all-day kindergarten space in the elementary building. This is our first item to individual action.
Okay. And again, I would, I want to frame this with the idea that as we came to you in November, it was after several months of work on the part of the cabinet, really trying to think about where we were demographically, where we were academically, what our needs were, trying to think about what the short-term issues were that we were facing. In this case, the need to make sure that we had adequate space for the new all-day K that was being funded at state level, but also that we wanted to really take a hard look at some long-term issues. And so as we look at these pieces, while this first item is definitely trying to address this short-term issue of trying to make sure that we have space available for the kindergarten programming, the two pieces to come, the demographic study, which we'll be asking you to approve tonight, and the facility study that we'll be asking you to approve on the 27th, really will take us that next step down the road. And we really do believe that in order to kind of think those things through, we've got to look not only at what we're going to need for the fall of 2014, but we also need to take a really hard look at where we need to be thinking for the next 10 years in terms of population, in terms of diversity, in terms of demographics, in terms of the ability of facilities to operate, and so on. Again, we did a significant amount of work discussing options before we met with you guys the first time, which was at the work session on the 21st of November. We shared a large chunk of data at that time. Came back in December and talked to you specifically about what we were proposing as a recommended short-term option to address the need for the four classroom spaces. And we hinted a little bit at what potentially could be the broad variety of long-term options that might be needed. We also came back and talked with you because you asked for it, to talk a little bit about what were the other options that we had discussed. And there were a number of other options that we discussed and ended up stepping away from because we saw significant issues with those options in terms of their ability to meet the needs of our students. And so we, you know, are coming to you tonight with a request to approve providing space for those kindergarten spaces at Sibley by relocating the district DCD moderate program to, from Sibley to Greenville Park, beginning with the 2014-15 year. What I want to do, I guess, is to take just a minute and take you back a decade or more and kind of help you kind of put this in perspective. Because I think, obviously, when we make a recommendation like this, you know, the thinking is, well, was this just something that is, is coming up quickly? What's the thought behind it? If we go back more than a decade in Northfield, and obviously many of you were residents of Northfield more than a decade ago, you know that we had a significant number of our special education programming pieces that were done outside the system. We had kids that were going up to Dakota County, kids going to 917. We had a private program that was being run out of Faribault that provided programming opportunities for kids. And as Gary came into the system and as I came into the system, we really tried to take a hard look at how are we going to provide special education programming? And, you know, the options that were out there at that time were, if you were a larger district, you sent your kids to the intermediate district. So a Farmington or Lakeville or Burnsville or moving up into the metro typically sent their kids to an intermediate district, any students who required specific and more complex special education programming. If, in small districts, if you look at Cannon Falls, or you look at Zambrotto-Vazepa, or you look at Kenya-Wanamango, those districts that are smaller typically bring their, bring programs together with education cooperatives. And so we have, like the Good Hugh County Ed District, we have the district that Gary came from originally in New Ulm with Riverbed. And those programs actually, again, were set up to provide for small schools, a place where programs could be provided that were above and beyond kind of the basic educational programs for special education, learning disabilities. So really, we saw at that time, basically, large districts using an intermediate system, small districts tending to use a cooperative program. Northfield really at that time made a conscious choice. And the conscious choice was that we were going to try to bring as many of those more complex programs into the system and have it done locally as we could. And in doing that, we made a decision that we would create district-wide programs at the elementary to support those needs. Our belief was that in doing that, we could address almost all the programs except for those those that were really the most complex, a day treatment kind of program or a transitional program. And there, we, we were able to begin the discussion over the last several years of partnering with our neighbor to the south in Faribault to really think about how do we, we get to those programs that are even beyond things that we can provide locally? By providing it in those, in that format and using a district-wide format, basically, we provided quality services that couldn't be provided in each building, it would be totally cost prohibitive. But it also would reduce the cost, more importantly, the significant time it takes to transport kids. Because if you think about it, with the programs we were doing before, we were, we were routinely putting a special education student on a bus to ride an hour or more each way to get to the programs that they needed to get to, to meet their needs. And, and so, basically, you know, our approach was to stay away from that. We also felt we could retain special ed dollars to spend more directly on our kids rather than spending them on what tends to be a more costly format, which is the, the format of either cooperative district or a intermediate district. In order to make those programs work most effectively, basically, and try to respond to the, the changing needs of our kids, and those needs have changed, if you think about it going back a decade, we weren't thinking about NB programs. We really weren't thinking about MI programs. We were briefly thinking about EBD programs. All of those programs have come to us in the last decade, along with the DCD Moderate Program. We really came, you know, had a belief and operated under a belief, and I think we've always operated under a belief, that since the students for each of these programs come from all three buildings, the location of the program must be based on space availability across the district and not the home attendance of any individual student. Because we know in every one of these programs we put together, there are going to be kids from Greenville Park, there are going to be kids from Bridgewater, there are going to be kids from Sibley. And so, we felt that as programs changed and as, as we needed to meet, meet the needs, we needed to move programs to where the space was available. And we did that with the low incidence programming, we did it with EBD over the years. And in fact, up until this discussion, most recently, we never even asked the board to think about it. Basically, Gary reviewed, said, this is where the program needs to go, here's space for the program, let's, this is where we need to put it for this coming year. It's very clear that the Minnesota Department of Ed basically supports the ability of local districts to place district programs in any elementary building. And districts our size, districts like those of the new conference that we're moving into with the Big Nine, routinely had created district-wide programs and programs move as space needs evolve. What we do know and, and what we very much care about is trying to provide quality transitions. And I think if we look at the history, when we've made modifications, when we moved the EBD program, when we moved the LI program, we have very, very consciously and very, very directly worked with parents and with students to make that transition happen. And we've typically moved the teacher with the, those students, oftentimes have been able to move some of the EAs with them, but we've always tried to make sure that the transition was positive and that we gave people multiple opportunities and students multiple opportunities to feel okay about that transition. And the experiences I think we've had, and I think Gary and Cheryl would reflect on that, have been positive because those transitions, we have worked very carefully with parents to try to make that happen. I think in the end, though, I think it's, it's important for the board to think about the fact that moving this program at this time assures that we do have four full kindergarten classroom spaces in each of our elementary buildings. It maintains quality district-wide special education programs in every building, as we always have tried to do, regardless of the location of the program. And I think the thing at this point is, it maintains the equity in art and music and media and technology and computer lab facilities that were envisioned in 2008 when we made the decision to build a Sibley addition and try to recapture and make sure that all buildings could have appropriate computer labs, they could all have an art space rather than art on a cart, that they could all have the, the programming spaces they needed to meet the needs beyond the core academic program. As we looked at the other options for that, that fourth kindergarten classroom, we rejected them. We either rejected them because of the cost, we rejected them because of the security, increased security exposure of having students outside the building or at a neighboring building, or because of the fact that they significantly and negatively impacted the overall elementary program quality. So, I think it's important, and I just wanted to share with you, we absolutely do not take this lightly. This is not something that we rush into or, or do not really think about the impacts that it's going to have. But I think the reality has been, for over a decade, the approach that we have used has been that those programs are moved as needed to meet the needs of the system because the program is, is not, is not deterred by the location which the program is located. And it will always have some students who are in their home school. So, I think as a, as an administrative team, as a superintendent's cabinet, I hope that we've given you the information you need to, to make this first decision. I do think it's something that it's time for us to move through and make the decision and move forward. And again, I would also encourage that as we get into these second two pieces, where we're really looking at where we need to go for the long term, that we also take the time to actually get the data that we need there and really think about what the facilities' needs are going to be for the future. We know that, for instance, the DCD Moderate Program is only a couple of years old. It didn't even exist. Again, 10 years ago, the NB program didn't exist. We built those programs because instead of putting the program in Rosemont-Happel Valley-Eagan or farther into the Twin Cities or in some other program outside, we had not just choice to keep it here, to where the maximum length of travel that a kid has, has got to take in order to, to get to one of those districts' programs is 10 or 15 minutes. So, I guess I just wanted to share this with you as you kind of think about the process. I know I'd be happy to answer any questions. Matt is also here, I see Cheryl's also here. We'd be happy to answer any questions for you, but at this point, we'd like your consideration for approval.
All right. Board members, this is an item for individual action, so I, while we may have questions and discussion, I would like to have a motion on the table. The superintendent's recommendation is a motion to approve the providing space for the four classrooms at Sibley by relocating the DCD District Moderate Program from Sibley to Greenville Park. Is there a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation? So, moved by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann? All right, discussion. Questions, comments, thoughts? Julie?
One thing that, you know, we're all aware, but I think it's, it's worth reviewing or repeating or reminding everyone is that while legislators approved funding for all-day kindergarten, they did not give us any additional money to address space needs. And this is not a problem that's unique to Northfield. In fact, I think we've seen statewide schools struggling to find ways to resolve their short-term space issues that this legislation created. I, I actually want to, in addition to Chris's comments, but I would like to commend administration because they did work very hard in determining and fully vetting all viable options to resolve this space issue that, that this legislation has created. And in my view, moving the district-wide DCD Moderate Program to Greenville is really the most viable option and why I wish there were other options that we had to consider, they don't exist. The other options require significant resources or would entail disruption of very large groups of students and staff. This isn't a decision that, that I'm taking lightly and it's one that we've, I appreciate having the opportunity that we have had to really both study this, to really determine how we, how we all want to, you know, the position we have on it. And my position is that, you know, I plan to support this, this proposal.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
Well, since I started working on this, as soon as I got up this morning and finished it at six, and I'm not sure that it's exactly what I want to say, I figure I should just say it. And I'll be less, I'll be more, you'll understand me better if I just read it, I think. As I think is true for most of us here, I've struggled with this issue for the better part of two months. I've been torn between the particular anguish of two very determined and very devoted parents and the remorseless utilitarian logic of a situation that demands placing the good of the many above the good of the one. We have a student who's happy and thriving at Sibley Elementary School, he's part of the Sibley community, and it's a hard thing to be asked to give up that assured sense of belonging. More than anything else, over the past two months, I've felt that sense of loss. You can say that change is inevitable and that children need to learn how to deal with transitions, but there is a difference between an expected rate of passage like the transition from elementary school to middle school and an unexpected enforced shift from one school to another. I do think it would be a good idea as part of the initial IEP process at some point to make it clear to parents what you've just said, that the district can't guarantee that a specific special education program will be maintained at a specific site and that the location of a program is subject to change based on enrollment and space considerations. Matt tells me that in some districts, I think he mentioned Austin, that parents are asked to sign a written statement to that effect, and I think this would probably be a good idea, just so it's clear that these are the realities of the situation. I believe that the Doc Endors moved to Sibley, into the Sibley attendance area on the assumption that it would be their neighborhood school without understanding the contingent nature, nature of the special education programs, which I think makes this situation seem particularly unfair. So, I think that these things really should be, the communication on these things should be very clear. Over the past two months, naive freshman school board member that I am, I've held on to the diminishing hope that I could come up with a brilliant solution that would satisfy everyone. But I realize in the end, the school superintendent and his cabinet are ultimately in the best position to evaluate the situation and to recommend a course of action. In this case, the district can commit to offering the same level of service to students in the DCD Moderate Program, whether that program is located at Sibley or Greenville Park. The superintendent's recommendation will involve a transition for the students involved, but it's a transition that the district has helped students make successfully in the past. All of the other options presented to the board involve making significant changes that the district is not as well-prepared to make and the outcomes of which are far less certain. This being the case, I will reluctantly support this superintendent's recommendation.
Like Rob, I too have worked on this for, I've thought about it for a couple of months, as all the board members have, I believe, and worked on sharing my thoughts most of the day, finishing at about 5:30 at night. Like Rob, I need to read it because it's, it's too important to speak from the cuff on this. With this motion before as the issue before is now is to provide for all-day kindergarten for the children of this district as directed by the 2013 legislature. Issue has been in front of the board since early November of this past year. To some observers, however, they may see it as two-part issue. The most significant issue for the district is how to accommodate the legislative decision made last year regarding all-day kindergarten. The board asked the district administration for a more detailed report of the options. Board received that report last month, and all members have been reviewing reported I have, I presume. I've also been asking community members for their opinion on this issue. During that same time, the board's been receiving emails from the family and their friends regarding the perceived impact on one child. If the board accepts and approves the superintendent's recommendation. I have significant sensitivity on this issue and to this family's concerns, as I consider my own course of action. Issue is close to my family as my family's brother, three of his four children would have been fit into the definition of special needs babies. Also, my brother's, previous one was my wife's brother, my brother-in-law. Also, my brother's son, now aged 50, is living in a group home in Faribault, in Mantito, blind deaf and with several heart issues, so I do have sensitivity to the issue. Having considered recommendations for the administration, considering the taxpayers who had left me to speak for them, and having considered the communications from the family and the friends of the family, I do plan to support the superintendent's recommendation.
Excellent. John?
I just would say that, you know, I have not anguished about this publicly because it's, I guess, not what I do, but I would describe this as the least worst option rather than the best option. And I guess I would agree that it would be nice if we could do something different, but I, I don't see what that is. And we have, I think, made best efforts to evaluate all the options and try to reach some, a decision that, that works. And, and Rob has certainly tried very hard and, and researched all the options as I think everyone else has. And I'm sorry that there isn't a better choice, but I think this is the choice that we are left with.
Other discussion?
Well, I guess I would, I would probably just echo what my other board members have, have said in that I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, hoping for some other solutions. I would thank the administration for spending so much time talking me through the options and why they won't work and, and what, what we have in front of us. I know that everyone has spent a lot of time considering them and that in the end, this, as John said, is the, not the best option, but the, the least worst.
Least worst.
I guess I can, I can say that as board members and administration doing everything we can to think about that transition as, as has happened in the past and as Dr. Richardson has talked about, as much as can be done to make that transition as smooth and as responsive to the, the children involved, and then just being grateful that it's a, it's a 15-minute drive and not an hour drive that we're still able to, to continue to offer the programs here would be much, be much more difficult and more prolonged, I think, discussion if we were looking at, you know, something outside of the district. So, I, I too would, with reluctance, but understanding that this is, this is the option in front of us, would support the superintendent's recommendation as well.
Any other discussion? All those ready for vote? All those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the demographic study. And board members, you have in your packet of, your table file a very thick packet. And is that for the next one?
That's for the, that's for the next piece. The demographic piece is...
Is just what we had in our...
Yeah, and I'll just open it up for you and then I, I'd like to ask Matt to kind of share some thoughts.
So, that's the one-sheeter that you received?
It's just the one-sheeter, right.
In your original packet.
And again, I guess I would just frame that, that as we think about the long-term options and the long, and the long-term resolution, what we know that is going to... and the long, and the long-term resolution, what we know that is going to need to be in place before we can do that next set of thinking is a clear and accurate projection of the next 10 years into the future, looking at what is likely to happen with enrollment, but also what is likely to happen with the demographics of the enrollment that we have in terms of growth of free and reduced-price lunch population, growth in terms of students of color, and how that's impacting specific neighborhoods. And so Matt worked with identifying three different individuals that we wanted to look at as possibilities. Hazel Reinhardt, kind of the dean, I guess, that could be male or female, couldn't it? Kind of the dean of demographers for probably the last two or three decades. And I think probably at one time was the state demographic. But who also had done the study for us with our last study that was done in 2003 or '04. We asked her to put together a proposal. We asked School Finance to put together a proposal. Those are the folks that do the work for us on negotiations and some of the other financial calculations. And then we also made contact with Tom Gillespie.
I actually got to talk to him, which was pretty cool for going to our demographic.
And I actually got to talk to him a couple of different times, and as we.
It was like groupie, it was a groupie, you know.
As we moved through the process, Tom made it very clear that he was really new to this part of the process. He had never really done a school district demographic study before. Felt a little unsure, was a little unsure in terms of even how to price it and think about it. And so reluctantly, after Matt actually had given him some extra time to check out the possibilities, the decision basically was, he did not decide to go forward. So we ended up with two pieces. And then Matt, I'd like you to kind of talk to them about the difference between Hazel's project and what she was proposing versus what School Finance's, and why we're looking at recommending Hazel's process as the one we want.
Absolutely, and really interesting stuff, and actually quite exciting to read. I think one of the pieces that we went with, we were recommending Hazel Reinhardt here for a number of reasons. First of all, she did this study a decade ago, and it's uncanny how close she was. She predicted a decade of flat growth, and in some of the studies, she does a range. So she'll do a low K, high migration. There's a whole number of different calculations she does. And in one of them, she came within three students a decade later. It's pretty impressive how close she came. Hazel has decades of experience doing demographic projections. Schoolfinances.com, who we have great admiration for with their financial planning model and the negotiations costing software that we use, are into this game five years. They will do a five-year projection, and you can just tell that they're just a little bit newer. The next time we do a demographic study, I think their process will have matured to the point where they'd be even worthy of stronger consideration than what we gave them. Everybody and anybody who does a demographic study uses the good old-fashioned cohort survival method. So they will study how kids have moved from first grade to second grade, and they will calculate averages of how many kids have dropped out of that grade from year to year, and then they will use that to project as they move forward. A piece that we're recommending to you tonight, another methodology that Hazel uses, is something called a housing unit method survey. And that's the only piece that we saw that can potentially give us more granularity around neighborhoods. And we had a chance to view a couple of her most recent demographic studies, including one that she did for the Bloomington Public Schools in 2011, where she actually was able to do some projections by elementary school. And Bloomington being one of the larger school districts in the state, pretty impressive that she was able to do some of those greater detailed calculations based upon the area that they work with. We did find that, thankfully, the county is not going to charge us any more for the data, since as taxpayers in Rice County, we've already paid for it once, and Dakota County, and Goodview County as well. Hazel will do a 10-year projection, just like she did the last time. She will, something we didn't do before is some special populations, and she'll add that. And we're asking for the ability to go up to four special populations at $250 apiece. Things like ethnicity, things like English language learners, things like free and reduced-price lunch. And she and I have had several communications about the feasibility of projecting special education population. She has done this for some schools because some school districts really find it very interesting, but at the same time, she says it's a very difficult projection because there are so many factors that come into being identified for special education. So we would like the ability to select up to four, not that we would pick four, but if we were to go all the way to four, if we were to see some additional pieces from her, that that special ed piece would be helpful to us. It's something we certainly believe that we'd like to try to see if it's possible, but we also trust her recommendation as well, because she knows what she's doing. Again, the housing unit projection study is a little bit, it adds some dollars to it. So her total with the four projections, the four special populations projection would be around $9,300. It's not cheap, but at the same time, we believe that the data that we can get from this, and again, being very proactive, I wasn't here in 2003, some people were. If you remember that study, I don't really know exactly what condition the district was in at that point, but it was just after some of the new buildings had opened, if I'm, if I'm remembering right, about at the same time. We're at a point where we are feeling like we are, that we have our financial house in order, that we can have an eye for the future from a position of strength, as we've talked about before, and doing the best that we can to manage the fund balance that you have worked so hard to develop and to make sure that that is spent in a way that is very planful about our future. And so we recommend Ms. Reinhardt's study to you for all of those reasons and more.
I think the last piece too, is that, again, the two things come together, but this has to come first. So really, before we can complete the facility study, the demographic study has to be in process or being completed. And as Hazel's indicated, while the basic cohort survival method, enrollment projection 10 years out, not looking at neighborhoods, whatever, can be done in about a six-week block, the other piece where you really get into the detail of saying, in the Greenville Park neighborhood, this is what the enrollment of students of color is going to be. This is what the percentage of free and reduced-price lunch kits is going to be. That takes additional time. And they use, help me, Matt, with the initials GIS.
Yeah, it's Geographic Information.
Information system, which is, again, the county's purvey, and, but the county has offered that to us for free.
The actual data, the housing projection data.
And then basically, what the individuals with Hazel will do is actually to take all of that data and put it into a report. So we actually see it with, here's Greenville Park, here's the specific information. Here's Bridgewater, and here's the specific information, and so on. We think that's going to be extremely important as we begin to think about where we're headed with our various elementary buildings going forward. And right now, actually, Hazel's basic study was less expensive than School Finance's basic study. The thing that makes her study more expensive is the addition of the housing unit study. But we really think that's an important part, and we really encourage having both of those pieces done. Any questions we can answer for you about that?
And since it's an item for action, if we could have a motion on the table before we get into this session.
So moved.
Moved by John to support the superintendent's recommendation, seconded by Noel. John?
Does this idea that lock us into this system of neighborhood schools, is that what we're trying to arrive at, or does it allow us then to evaluate other options?
It would allow us to evaluate other options, because we'd have not only district-wide data, but we'd also have data by neighborhoods, so that we'll be able to look both ways. And actually, the GIS data, I think, is probably down to the block.
I think it actually provides the widest variety of data for us to have a real rich and wide discussion about the different options. I think doing the additional piece gives us the chance to have not only the discussion about what happens if we were to continue with neighborhood schools, you know, what would happen if we were to look at some other potential option, and that could be in the discussions about what does the future of our elementary programming look like.
So I think it expands it, John, rather than keeping it.
There was it. Other questions or comments? Rob?
I'm just wondering about, I mean, there was, you said a study was done in 2003, and it was a 10-year projection, and you say it was off by like three students.
In one of the projections, yeah.
One of the projections. Just looking at the imbalances that we're trying to address here, the extreme crowding now at Sibley, where I calculated that it's enough students that you could create an entire new classroom out of them every two years. I mean, it's like an average of 11 new students in each of the past seven years. And so there's that on one hand, and the demographic shift at Greenville, where the poverty's risen and the ELL student numbers have risen. Clearly, that either that wasn't, those specifics weren't predicted or we didn't use the study to deal with them. So my question is, what's the case there, and how will we use this study to?
Because the study in 2003 or '04 was only the enrollment projection. So all it gave you was, what's the total number of first graders and second graders and third graders and fourth graders? There was no delineation of the other piece. And I think a lot of it is that this is probably something that really with the county-wide information system, they now have data that really didn't easily exist before.
And we did do the housing unit projec, there is a housing unit projection in the 2003, but it's much more simple than what we're seeing in, for example, the most recent Bloomington report.
It was kind of the overall housing, in other words, how many new homes would we need? And typically, when they do the, kind of the broad enrollment projection piece, the data is about looking at, with each new housing unit, you know, how many houses does it take to produce X number of kids? And a lot of that is driven by what kind of house, what kind of house have you got, you know?
Well, that's exactly what they do. They look at townhomes, they look at single-family dwellers.
With the idea of, you know, is it an apartment, is it a townhome, whatever. Now, that's really starting to change, you know, because if we look at the new apartments that are now in the southern part of the Sibley District, 24 of the 28 units have kids in them. And they're almost all preschool-age kids. Typically, townhomes in the past had no kids in them. They typically were empty nester. But now, where it's tougher for a lot of people to own a home, they can buy into or rent or lease a townhome, and kids are there. So, I mean, that's a part of the, all part of the discussion that we want to get to. So, again, our encouragement would be, by doing this, I think, you know, we're going to get the best sense of what's there, and with the 10-year projection, I think it will put us in a position where we begin talking about the facilities and saying, you know, how are these facilities going to meet our needs? And, you know, will there need to be changes? Will there need to be reuse of various facilities? Will we need all the facilities for the same things that we're currently doing? Because especially in some cases, you know, we have repurposed, like Longfellow, totally differently than what it was 10 years ago, when it was a kindergarten center. And if we take a look at, you know, the ALC, it was in the, you know, 10 years ago, it was in the NCRC as it was first being opened, but it had, you know, you were lucky if you had 15 or 20 kids there at any one time because the program wasn't a seat-based program, it was a different program. So it just, I think we're at a point where this is going to be a real important piece for us to have.
I do think it's a very fair point, though, about looking at how we will plan to use the data moving forward. That's very reasonable. Coming in a little more than halfway past the commissioning of the study, I don't know how. And my sense would be you would use that data much more in the early years of the study than you would maybe toward the later years of the study. Though what I would cer, one of the things that we've really tried to do with any time that we have paid any external consultant to help us with something like this, we're paying for their expert analysis, but at the same time, we are going to learn from them. The cohort survival method is not a secret. You can easily find the calculations for that. What I think is very fair is for us to be matching up our annual enrollment port every, report every year against what the demographic study said, and making any adjustments. It's amazing to me that Hazel's study came out as clean as it did when you think about the Great Recession being in the middle of it. And in fact, that's been the trouble with some of the other demographic reports that have been given to other districts, especially in a five-year basis. Their enrollments were way off because who could have seen the housing bubble burst as badly as it did? But what I can pledge to you for sure is that we're going to mash that up against where our enrollment, you know, you've got enrollment port tonight. We're going to look at that, we're going to make sure that we use it as a driver because we do believe that it's going to provide us that projection for long term. We can promisefully use it, we'll try to adjust it as we go, and try to do it as much ourselves. But Chris and I have agreed that there are, once a decade, it certainly is reasonable to bring somebody out to say independently, I'm going to look at it from the outside, and here's what I think. And doesn't get much better than Hazel Reinhardt. Maybe the next time we'll have Tom, maybe he'll be ready to do it the next time.
All right, if I may, I'd like to bring a little background into this. And I got to ask a question first. When did we occupy the middle school?
2004, fall of 2004.
Okay. Because she provided the district with information on the recommended classroom size and so on of that school.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that means.
And it was '03, '04 was when she did her study?
Yeah, probably then. Well, it was prior to the, prior to the drawings, so that the recommendation could influence the design. Well, I recalled a couple, three things that she said. A recession will complicate my report accuracy. Secondly, you need approximately 150 to 180 new homes to be able to support the growth that you've had in the previous 10 years. And of course, we saw the recession, which my friend, the builder, used to build 24 homes, now built in 18 months, built zero. So the impact was pretty severe. And she also said a four-lane highway from Apple Valley to the Northside city limits will just pretty much zero out any report time anybody's got to do. So there are some, some issues that.
Not thinking that's coming, though. We haven't seen it in the last decade, so maybe later.
But the, yeah, you're right. It won't happen.
And then just the other thing that will be interesting is that all these, they also do an analysis of where is the buildable property? You know, because if you think, if you just think about Northfield, there are parts of our community that already has the infrastructure that the city has put in where it would make it more desirable to build versus another area that may not have that infrastructure, would cost a contractor more to do so. Those are the kinds of things that will be part of the study as well to talk about. When they build those homes, where do they build them? And how would that fall within your current neighborhood school structure, and those kinds of pieces? So it's, it's pretty in-depth, and while, while some of it is certainly projecting things that haven't happened yet, the people that we're recommending have a great track record.
One other comment. I asked her, what's going to happen in Northfield? She said, your public schools didn't ask me to provide a summary of Northfield. Mr. Stratton. However, during the break, I said, well, you can't spend six weeks in Northfield and not have an opinion. She said, Northfield is going to grow at a fantastic rate in the retirement community. Won't put kids in the school, but you're going to have a lot of taxpayers.
A lot of taxpayers.
Carrie?
Well, I just want to kind of piggyback on John's question, just to make sure that the data that we gather and the way that we're using it is focused on looking at the whole universe of how we can improve programming and how we can be flexible for other kinds of programming that might come along. So we're not even articulating data in terms of this neighborhood or that neighborhood, because we know we have to redraw those boundaries. If we do stay with neighborhood schools, we're always redrawing those boundaries every few years anyway. But I think just to be careful how we articulate the results of the information that we get, so that we're maintaining the greatest possibility for flexibility in how we can improve our programming.
We would agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions or comments?
And I particularly liked the addition of the, in addition to the cohort survival of looking at the housing unit method. I think that should give us. I think that, that should give us, as Dr. Richardson was saying, the flexibility to consider options.
All right, if there's no more discussion, we have a motion and a second on the table to support the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proposal from Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Service to complete the enrollment production study and housing unit study at a cost not to exceed ninety-three hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item for individual action is the school site improvement plans, which we have been hearing at the last few board meetings that we've gone.
And at this point again, what we would simply like to do as we have done in each of the preceding years is now that you've received all the information from all of the different reporting entities would be basically to approve the plans submitted for the 2013-14 year, both the progress reports from 2013 and the goals and programming set for 2013-14. And again, my sense is this will become a part of what we will need to do in terms of work best workforce. And, you know, if we can work through that process, what we really want to encourage the state to do is to take advantage of the fact that that's where the change is going to occur. You know, and that's where we really want to look at the SMART goals and where we really want to look at the focus along with what happens at the PLC level. So again, I've, I have appreciated the continued growth in terms of the ability of buildings to provide quality reports for us, to set good goals and to give us data about how they're doing.
All right, so this is an item for individual action. I would ask for a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation to approve the seven site improvement plans. Move by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion.
I would just add that I like the process that we have in Northfield of having DPEC with the community setting these overarching goals and that each site being able to have their own site, looking at those goals. And I, I would hope that the state would look at that as a model.
That's what Mary and I are going to be working on in the, in the near future, so.
Good. All right, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of the superintendent's recommendation to approve the plans say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent grouping. And so there were some additional items added from your table file into the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? I would ask for a motion to approve, approve the consent grouping.
Sure.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we have a number of items for information, including a fifth item, sixth item. We have two additional items that are in our table file as well. So we have six items for information. The first being the 2014-2015 school year calendar, which you received in your board packet.
Okay, and I, what I would share with you at this point is that we've had a meeting with our Meet and Confir Committee. We reviewed with them the school district interests that are listed on the backside of the calendar. Eleven different items, including maintenance of the hundred and seventy-four days, the normal pieces in terms of Labor Day, trying to get done by the end of the first full week in June, in terms of, of working on instructional continuity and providing those four days of preschool in service so that we really can continue to put the Ready, Set, Go program, which we really think has been extremely positive, balanced semesters, et cetera. The, the one kind of new piece that we're looking at here is the concept of identification of snow makeup days. And really looking at the idea that for 2014-15, we want to try to identify two days that are there. And we did do some work with that as part of the Meet and Confir discussion. We're going to continue to do and tweaking on that because we want to make sure that we don't have any issues from either decisions or agreements made in the past that would have, would have any impact on not allowing us to use particular days. But our hope will be to be able to come back to you and to lock in those makeup days again by the twenty-seventh of January when we come back together. As you can see on the calendar, we, we are in kind of the last year of the, of looking at a two-week winter break. And again, as you look at it, a big part of the problem there is that the first of January isn't until Thursday. So now we're looking at, at only one day after a holiday to come back and try to come to school. And what we know is if we try to look at trying to do something in that week of, of the winter break that includes Christmas, that if you try to grab three days, which we really think is the number of days in a, in a week that really makes sense and the actual number of days we had a year or so ago when we did the early return after the end of the, or at the end of the winter break, if you do that, you'd have to have a school day on Christmas Eve. To me, that seems problematic. I just don't think that's probably going to happen. So, but what I also want to encourage is the fact that, you know, we went back and actually the Meet and Confir Committee, we went back and looked at calendars going back four or five years. And what we found is that over those four or five years, the, the first several had very, very short breaks because we just had basically a week. Because either the, the holiday was actually on a weekend. And when the holiday is on a weekend, you can get time in either before or you can get time where you can start right after the holiday on the, the next regular Monday. So, our hope is that as we move forward, that we understand that there's a balancing. So, again, what we'd like you to do is to look this over, do some thinking about it. We will be getting back to you as soon as we can with kind of a lock-in in terms of the possible makeup days. The concept behind the makeup days is the idea of if we have a, if we have three, three days where we're closed before the end of the first semester, then we look at trying to get the first makeup day and bring us back to two. And then if we need another makeup day or if we, we're at three days by time, by the time we hit the spring break, that we would do the same thing. And so the idea would be that we would try to keep the number of days lost due to weather, if at all possible, to two. We're very concerned, obviously, we're in, we're sitting in this year, we already have two gone. And so we're, we're trying to get this thought through. And again, I, I would apologize to the fact that we have a little glitch on what might be the exact potential workday makeup days, but we will again have that to you before the next board meeting.
And Chris, I think it's important to point out, this is the first time in my knowledge that the Northfield schools would have in a long time identified anything on the calendars of makeup days. So, really just making sure we look at it all from all angles, working with all of our associations to ensure that we're going through all that appropriate contractual language.
Okay, so that, that's kind of the first item for information. The second item for information is, is really just a follow-up in terms of, of thinking that if that works well for the coming year, given where we are right now, should we look at trying to create a makeup day in 2013-14? And again, we wanted, we wanted to do a little more research in terms of the setup on that date, but the idea being that if we were at a point by the end of the third quarter where we had, in this case, we're saying four days because we already have lost the ability, I think both Matt and I would tell you, the ability to try to make up a day within the next two weeks if we make a choice.
The ten-day forecast looks really good.
Ten-day forecast, well, it's actually, tonight doesn't look so good. So, but the, the idea being that, that we actually would have, we'd go four days out and if we had four days off, then we would make up a day and go back to three, which would be the equivalent of actually what we did last year when we got the May second unanticipated snowstorm. So again, our hope will be to come back to you at the next meeting, ask for a final approval on the fourteen-15 calendar and also provide you with a makeup day piece because we would like, if we're going to do that, to get the information out to the community by that second board meeting in January so that if we do make a choice to make up a day later in the spring, that we, that we give people at least a couple months. The other thing I think is important is, you know, other people would say to you, well, why don't you just make up the days at the end of the year? In my mind, that violates kind of our district interest of saying, you need, if you're going to do makeup days, they need to be when they're instructionally relevant. If you put another makeup day for kids, the beginning of the second week of June, that is not a viable alternative. So, our idea is that we need to get these days built into the calendar when they can still impact student learning in a, in a real way. So, go ahead.
I was just going to say with Carrie and Amy, I really appreciated administrations and the teachers' perspective, even considering of when spring break lands and what that means in terms of coming back and having enough time before testing. I mean, that was kind of eye-opening for me to think about. I was just like, oh, why wouldn't we do it then? And they said, well, no, because we need that time. So really thinking about the student learning is, is what we're going to do.
Yeah, it was very, very clear. Everyone was very focused on what was going to work best for student learning and, you know, just good to have that reaffirmed.
Yeah. So again, both of these will, will be coming back to you on January the twenty-seventh for your approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
The next item isn't as just educational, not just, but it's Educational Assistant Recognition Week, which is the week of January the twelfth through the eighteenth. And again, this is, is one where obviously if we think about the work that our educational assistants do across the system, both in terms of student aides that are working with regular education programs and activities and supervision and, and those that work with the vast variety of special education students, these folks are a valuable part of our school district and it is important for us to recognize them. And I know that recognition will occur in individual buildings. So just being aware that that's coming up. And then the TIES Exceptional Teachers, again, we'd shared with you before that Amy Allen and Katrina Meehan were selected. They had an opportunity to be honored and congratulated by the commissioner and had an opportunity to talk about and showcase their, their work. And obviously, they have done some really good pieces in terms of the implementation of the digital iBook content and, and looking at all the different ways that they can model good technology usage in the system. So, a very, very positive thing. So, now TIES Conference has become a really major conference in the state, as, as Matt indicated, there's, we're thirty-six hundred attendees at that. So obviously a great piece. Again, congratulations to Amy and Katrina. And then the additional items that we had identified for you.
Did you get a big packet out?
This is when, when you want to take a look at that big packet. All right, the, the big packet we, we provided you is a copy of the three proposals that we received to date. There were the District Wide Facilities Master Plan. And Paul and Matt really took a major role in, in implementing this piece. They met with individuals from at least two of the groups who are both represented here. An opportunity for those folks to talk about what we wanted and also to walk through the building, if they will walk through the buildings and get a handle on that. What you're going to see is some very significant differences in, in the total cost. But what I would say to you is all three of these folks are quality people and, and quality vendors in terms of architect and engineering firms. And so we'll be prepared at the next meeting to come back to you what they recommended vendor to do the District Wide Facilities Master Plan. Again, the focus of this master plan is not only to look at what we currently have, but it's also to look at the serviceability for the future and what the major needs are and also to look at, based on the demographic data and information, what are we going to need to look at for the future? And actually developing for us alternatives for consideration and ideas to consider in terms of possible changes or modifications and whether that's remodeling or additions or even construction, if that appears to be the, the right direction. I personally worked with one of the three of these folks who I know very well and have looked at their pieces, but I know both of these other folks are high quality and are, one is used in a great deal to our south.
Yep.
And another one is also a major player in terms of these types of studies and also architectural and engineering work in the Twin Cities. So, good, good night, night stand reading.
And just a couple of, the reason we don't have great analysis for you tonight is that these were due on Thursday. You know, so really we, we got them late Thursday afternoon at the close of business and so we just have not had the time to in detail pull it apart. I will mention that we have talked with the firm that is the lowest bid because it was so, lowest quote, excuse me, it was so much lower. And we were really concerned that they had a, a question, that they weren't understanding what we were asking. And in some follow-up today, they absolutely understood what we were asking, but they were willing to price it at that level. So we believe they will meet all the specifications that we've asked. And when we met with these folks and did the walkthrough, spent a significant amount of time talking about that it's not just, what we're looking at is an honest appraisal of the facilities, not just the serviceability and all those pieces about, but about how they will support educational program for the next couple of decades. And I was very comfortable with all the folks who came to the walkthrough that they not only understood it, but they have done that kind of analysis for school districts before. It's not just about the space, it's how that space is used to support students. So, I do believe all three of these folks, we would get quality. And frankly, I've worked with two of the three firms, or at least one of the principals in one of the firms and then the other firm in, in some of the few building projects I've been involved over the years. And I do think that they get that. So, we'll have a more detailed analysis, analysis for you at January twenty-seventh and just to focus on the fact that we've really heard you loud and clear that you wanted more than just the facilities, but how will the facility support student achievement and student learning as we move forward?
And, and kind of visioning into the future in terms of what, what is going to support not only education today, but education as we move forward? And provide the flexibility, we need to make that happen. Okay. And the final piece of item for information is the enrollment report. And the only reason that that ended up on the table file is because Chris wasn't working on Monday, it was Sunday. And so when she reported.
Not Chris Richardson, Chris, that's a little deeper, yes.
When she, when she reported back on Wednesday, she got the report completed so we could get it done. Again, what you're going to, going to see is, you know, we talk about flat, it's flat. We're, we're up about ten, eleven kids from where we were at the beginning of the year. And we've flexed up and down that ten kids. So, the numbers stay very solid. Okay, so that's all of the items that were on the, the items for information.
All right. Very good. So, future meetings, the next board meeting is January twenty-seventh and February tenth. And we have a number of other calendar items that were brought up. So the Service Learning, Open House is this Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Five to six.
Six to seven.
Six to seven.
Six to seven. And that's at the High School Lower Cap. The First Tech Transfer Meeting at the Middle School this Thursday, the sixteenth, from seven to eight-thirty, that's for the community. And then there'll be another one on the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, and that's also at the Middle School. For board members, if you want to do the walkthrough with the Senate Education Finance meeting, that's at seven-thirty this Friday, meeting at the High School Conference Room.
High School Conference Room, right.
And then the Chamber of Commerce Business Meeting.
Summit.
Summit is on Monday, the twenty-seventh, at seven AM at the College City Beverage. So, board members, Julie, I know, will be there. I'll be making the appearance, I can't stay for the whole thing, but I would encourage board members, if you have the time, to think about these dual enrollment options and the workforce issues. It's just terrific, so. Those are all of the future meetings then.
You bet. And then I just have a card from Gary Lewis and just wanted to share it with those of you that haven't seen it. So I think John, Rob and Noel, if you want to take a quick peek at it, I'll. peek, and then I'll get it back to the, to the office afterwards.
Very good. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Moved by Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Many is adjourned.